Everyone and welcome to let's pod this. My name is Andy Moore. I'm one of your hosts and I'm joined as I am every week. By my good friend and yours, Mr. Scott Nelson.
What's up, Andy?
Hey.
How are you? Happy March.
Thank you. It's my birthday month. I'm very excited.
It's Ashley's birthday month.
It's a good month. Spring is in the air.
That's what I hear. It's a good month to be born. It's a good month to have multiple sessions of the legislature running.
Yet again, also, Scott, you'll notice in front of me today is a blue microphones Yeti model microphone that I'm using today. This is the first time that you and I both have used the same model of microphone since we started the podcast nearly six months ago.
God, it's beautiful.
We had some technical difficulties and we've tried multiple different microphones. Today is the inaugural recording with both of our Yeti mics. I know I'm excited.
So you will now get Andrew's dulcet tones with the same high quality of sound with which you enjoy the sound of my voice.
That's not to say my other microphones are paltry, although some of them have been less superior to this one.
We've, I mean, we've had some hit or miss moments here on the pod with, with technology, but.
Right. When you're working on a shoestring budget, you do what you can.
Amen to that.
All right, Scott, what's, what's been going on this week?
You know, it's been, it's been, it has been a busy week down at the Capitol. There's a lot that's gone on. There's, there's a lot that's happened. There's a lot that has not happened as we're going to get into here. A little bit later, we're gonna go ahead and start off this week with a news roundup as we're want to do. This is our don't miss this segment. There's a whole bunch of, you know, there's so much to read out there. It can be really hard to keep up with what's worth your time and what's not.
I realized today I will never catch up.
Right, right. Well, what we're, what we're trying to do here is provide, you know, a curated, a curated selection of articles that we found intriguing or important or, you know, really worth a little bit of time for you to get into and check out. So that's what we're going to start this week.
And you're going to put all these on the blog post, which will go up probably tomorrow.
Yes, sir. They will be, they will be up on the blog with links and everything.
Excellent.
All right.
Very exciting.
So up first this week is a great piece by our friend Catherine Sweeney from the Journal Record. Catherine's got a nice piece here that talks about several ballot initiatives that have been proposed in the legislature this week, mostly on the Senate side. These are initiatives that would do everything from lower the threshold from for revenue raising measures from 75% down to 60%. That was one of them. The one that probably is most interesting, several other measures that would alter the constitution. Should they be passed and come to the ballot in December, it's definitely worth checking out. One thing I'll say about this, this is a journal record piece, so there is a paywall. You'll not be able to access the article unless you have a subscription to the journal record. I would say that it is absolutely worth a subscription to the journal record for this piece. And also all the other great journalism that they put out on a daily basis. It's really a fantastic paper covering politics and business here in the city.
It really is. I mean, the, the journal record is Oklahoma's business newspaper, as you said. And I don't subscribe at the moment, but I saw one last night at, at school and I thought, you know what? I really, I need to. It's where the, and their articles give a different slant than a lot of the other papers in town. So.
Yeah, absolutely. And you know, it's a local paper, the writers, they live here in town, they cover local issues. And they, they really do a nice job. And I think it's important to point that out that, you know, there's a lot of great media out there that's available for, you know, for free or for a donation. But print media across the country is really suffering right now. We saw several layoffs at the Tulsa World this week, some great people that aren't going to have a job anymore. And I'm not saying that it's at the feet of all of us to change all of that for every newspaper. But if you've got this, you know, if you've got a little money in your bank and you really enjoy this stuff, you can't go wrong with a subscription to some of the great local papers that we have here in the state.
This is true.
So, all right.
Speaking of great local papers that doesn't even have a print version.
Absolutely. Nondoc, our friends at Nondoc have a great article this week talking about the risk versus reward for a teacher strike. So you may be aware that there is a petition going around started by a teacher in Tulsa calling on teachers across the state to walk out to pressure lawmakers into action. Trey's got a Facebook poll in here that talks about a pretty high percentage of respondents, 84% talk of, say that they would support teachers walking out and trying to pressure lawmakers into funding a pay raise.
Wow, that's a really high percentage.
Yeah. And he's also got a nice, a really nice history here of, you know, what the history of pay for education in Oklahoma has been. What factors that teachers should think about as they are deciding whether or not this is something that they should do. Again, definitely, definitely worth your time. Also take a drink anytime I repeat words. Especially absolutely.
Absolutely.
All right. Number three this week, Oklahoma Watch, our friends at Oklahoma Watch who also, again, a local group. There is no cost. All the information that they put out there is available for free on their website. So they're a nonprofit doing some really great journalistic work. So if you feel like donating, they will accept and be grateful. They've got a piece this week that is a Q and A essentially about who can carry what kind of gun in Oklahoma. It's kind of a recap of all the gun laws we have here in the state.
So it's kind of like your rights as a gun owner, if you are a gun owner and also just to know who around us is possibly carrying gun. I don't know.
Yeah, yeah. So it's, 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 I included it this week because as we're going to talk about, there are several gun bills that were debated in the ledge this week and made it through committee. And this is, I think Oklahoma Watch kind of trying to put the laws that are being discussed and debated at the Capitol now. Kind of put those in the context of what gun laws in Oklahoma already are. So if that's something you're curious about and because it's a current topic at the Capitol, we think you should be definitely worth checking out this article at Oklahoma Watch. All right. The last two, last two are not local papers. We try to spread the love here in our news roundup that don't miss this segment. And this week we are traveling all the way to the Pacific Northwest where the Seattle Times, yes, you heard me correctly. The Seattle Times has a piece on Representative Mark McBride. There's a little bit backstory here. I don't think that we've actually talked about this on the pod.
No, so Representative McBride, several weeks ago, maybe a couple of months, it's all running together now, but he found a GPS tracking device on his vehicle and was certainly alerted that someone was tracking his movements. And thought that it might've been the wind industry because he had been a pretty vocal opponent of them and it was kind of a little kerfuffle. But then this week we saw, it, it came out that they didn't actually indicted anybody, I don't think, but they are, there was a police report that it may have been this like political operative from down in Texas known as Dr. Dirt.
Dr. Dirt, yeah.
And he's like almost 80, I think.
He's not, he's not a young man.
He's, so it's just an old guy named Dr. Dirt. And I thought this feels like some kind of novel, right?
Right.
Tom Clancy book.
Like, it seems like something that wouldn't be real. It honestly reminds me for any 30 walk, 30 wa, 30 rock watchers out there. When Jack Donaghy hires a PI when he's in there running for the GE CEO that are the GE chairmanship. Yeah. So Representative McBride, he found this tracking device. He reported it to law enforcement. There's been an OSBI investigation. Well, they found that the tracking device appears, my understanding anyway, the tracking device appears to have been placed by some private investigators. Those, that private investigation firm was hired by the aforementioned Dr. Dirt. What is not clear at this point is who hired this guy. He's a political operative who specializes in what's called opposition research, which is pretty much exactly what it sounds like. Opposition research is.
Oppo research.
Oppo research. That's what you want. If you're running for office and you want the dirt on your opponent, somebody who specializes in Oppo research is who you hire.
So you'd hire Dr. Dirt.
You'd hire that. This is what he does. He gets, he gets dirt on people. What has not been, I think, revealed at this point is who hired Dr. Dirt. So that's currently, I think, going to be the next kind of part of the investigation, but the, I just thought it was fun. I was like, the Seattle Times has an article about this.
Must be slow news day up in Seattle.
Well, it's really not though, because the other thing that's been making news in the Pacific Northwest this week that has drawn a lot of attention in the Oklahoma City social media sphere is that the Washington State Legislature this week voted to exempt themselves from the Open Records Act.
Right.
And that has made like front page headlines in all the major papers across the state of Washington. People are writing editorials. There's letters to the editor, news. I mean, this has been a huge, huge deal. Why would that make news in Oklahoma City? Because the Oklahoma Legislature has exempted themselves from open records for like the last several decades. That's just the way that they do business. And so it's an interesting contrast to see that in another state, when legislatures take steps to operate the way our lawmakers already operate here, there's this public like outcry. But in Oklahoma, we're kind of numb to the fact that the legislature can kind of, when they want to, they can do things in secret and not really be answerable as to what happened.
Right. And we'll talk about that a little while later because it came up in a bill this week about another board or agency that they were, a committee that they were going to appoint that would also be exempted, even though it seems counterintuitive.
Right, right. So that's the fourth article this week from the Seattle Times. And then last this week, the Kansas City Star, Oklahoma City is making news in the Kansas City Star. And I'm not going to say it's in a good way or a bad way, but I think it's maybe not what we would hope. There is a bill this session to mandate that all schools would have to display the national motto, which is in God we trust, that in God we trust would have to be displayed in every classroom, in every public school in the state. Florida is passed their state legislature passed a similar law last week. And so the similarity between these two laws in Oklahoma and Florida is really the subject of the Kansas City Star article. I was just kind of thought this was interesting. I also, it, one of the things that, that the representative sponsoring the bill says in the article is that like, he feels like this is important because this is the national motto and it shows that our forefathers felt this was important. Just so we're all clear, in God we trust was adopted as the national motto in like 1954.
Right. So it was not since the beginning.
Yeah. So this was not like Jefferson and Franklin and Washington all sitting around saying, in God we trust shall be the national motto.
It was right in the middle of like voter suppression and at the beginning edges between the war and the civil rights movement.
Yeah, basically. Yeah.
Interesting. And this proposal would require it to be not just allow it to be, because it's certainly allowed anytime.
Yeah, it would require it, but it also requires that it be paid for with private funds. So no, no taxpayer money would be used to enforce this.
So it's not an unfunded, unfunded mandate.
Right. Well, actually it is an unfunded mandate.
Well, yes, it is, I guess, but it's not.
But a fair point, a fair point.
It is unfunded, but it's not required to be funded by the state. Which is good for a state like us that is sorely short on actual funds.
Indeed, which we'll come back to here in just a minute. So that is don't miss this for this week. We are going to take a short break. And we'll be right back with a recap of all the legislative activity that you have been just waiting for this week.
And we're back with a second segment about the legislative recap, talking about what happened in the legislature this week. What did they do? If anything? And again, this is, as you mentioned earlier, Scott, we are still at the tail end of the second special session. It's not quite over as of today. There's a couple of more things that the, the governor has to maybe sign off. I think both chambers adjourned to the call of the chair today. So they, they didn't recess.
Yeah. Yeah, you're, you're right. Like so legislatively, we're done with the second special session. All the bills have been heard and passed. Really all that remains is for three bills to be pa, to be signed by the governor.
Right. So she's, she's did sign the budget bill or which was basically the cuts, right? So that's a House Bill 1020 XX.
Yes, sir. So she signed that, I think, Monday, right? Signed that Monday and put out a statement that caused a lot of consternation.
Yeah, of course. Because she blamed one party when I think all of us assigned blame to both parties.
Yes.
So that was 1020 XX, another similar bill, 1022 XX Dos Aquis.
Yes.
The most interesting bill in the world, no? Which is the caps on the deductions for.
10, so 1022 XX is the medical school education bill.
Oh, right. And also the other bills, I forget the numbers.
34 and 36.
Yeah, doesn't matter now. But the two things that they instituted caps on deductions for railroad and coal credits.
Yeah.
Which is, so long story short, it generates some revenue because it limits how much those industries can deduct.
Yeah. I mean, and it's not much. Like, I think it, I think it limits railroads to like, like 800,000 or a million. I mean, it's not much money.
But how interesting is it that we're still dealing with deductions and credits for the railroad industry?
Right.
When's the last time? I mean, that made a huge deal in like 1901.
Sure.
And here it is, 2018.
It's been a minute. And then kind of the same with coal. It's a very, very small amount of money.
Yeah. So that will leave us all of that together, everything signed. That ends this past year. And so the cuts rolled out as she signed 1020 XX that institutes a 2%, basically a 2% cut for these last four months.
Right.
For those, for all agencies, right? They spread it out.
Yeah. Nobody is held harmless.
Right. Not just the healthcare agencies, which were the ones that were initially affected. This goes to everybody.
Yeah.
So starting next year, we're starting, well, we're already in the 2019. We're in the session that will decide the budget for 2019.
Right.
Which that fiscal year starts in July. So what we, the decisions the legislature makes now in the regular session is about the budget henceforth, from now on, is about the budget for next year.
Right.
That starts in July 1st. And we already know that we have almost a $200 million budget shortfall, 168 million.
Yeah. So the Board of Equalization met last week and the Board of Equalization is, it's a group of high ranking officials here in, in the Oklahoma government. So like the governor, the treasurer, the state auditor and specter, the attorney general, the state agriculture secretary, a couple of others that I'm remembering. But the Board of Equalization is the group of people that certifies the revenue projection for the upcoming fiscal year. So basically what happens, they, the Board of Equalization meets, they look at what tax revenue is projected to be, what guaranteed expenditures are projected to be, and they put all that together and they come up and they give the legislature a number. And they say, here is how much money you have to spend. Or here is how much money you have to cut. It's, and it's been cuts every year.
For like a decade. Yeah.
So right now, the Board of Equalization certified that we are having a 167.8 million dollar budget shortfall for the next fiscal year. What does that mean? So it means one, that in order to forestall further cuts, the legislature is going to have to pass a budget in session, the regular session, the session will be in moving forward. They're going to have to pass a budget that raises at least 167.8 million dollars.
Just to, yeah, just to break even on what we've planned to spend.
Right. That does not restore any of the cuts from this past fiscal year. Okay.
Or the year before that.
Right.
Or the year before that.
Right.
Or the year before that, or the year before. I can keep going.
Right. It uses, so it uses the budget, it uses the budget and spending levels from the previous fiscal year as the baseline. So in order to even meet the spending threshold of this fiscal year, where we've already cut everything pretty drastically, we're going to have to raise 168 million dollars if we want to restore any of the cuts from this year. Let alone do things like fund a teacher pay raise, fund a pay raise for state employees, we're going to have to raise significantly more revenue than that. So I think the reason to harp on this is, don't hear that the governor signed the budget bill, she signed these other bills. They have adjourned from special session, budget woes are over. No, they're still here. They've just been pushed forward to the next fiscal year. And what will probably happen, as happens every year, is we'll be in the last two weeks of May, they'll be 10 days out from signee die and trying to come up with a budget plan.
Right. As always, we kind of expect it'll get down to the wire and they'll still be haggling it out. And now on the positive note, you know, 167 million is only about 10% of where we were like two years ago, when we had like 1.2 billion. So an improvement, but still, wouldn't it be nice to start the year knowing that like, we had a little extra money? That we could actually fund things like a teacher pay raise rather than wait until the end and knowing that we've got a big gap.
Yeah. And, and you know, I, and I thought about mentioning this earlier, you know, one of the, the general record bill that we cited earlier from Catherine Sweeney, one of the constitutional amendments that has been proposed or one of the ballot initiatives that would change the constitution that's been proposed in that bill would create a separate fund from the rainy day fund. So it would basically take, it looks at proceeds that come from their gross production tax specifically. And a lots every year that 5% of that goes into a budget reserve fund that would be tapped in times like next year to make up these holes. It's different than already, than the rainy day fund. It would take a different, it would create like a separate reserve fund that the money in it only comes from taxes on oil and gas.
But why? That's my question. Like it basically will function the same way. So why, why do it?
I, I think because one, it's a way to kind of protect specifically against the inevitable ups and downs that come with oil and gas prices. And two, because the rainy day fund, it constitutionally, there's only certain ways you can use it. And there are only certain revenue conditions under which you can use it. And I think that there might be some more fluidity with, with what's being.
But why not just change the rainy day fund to allow for that fluidity?
That would be too easy.
I mean, it just seems funny. Like we've got a savings account that we can tap into when things get tight and we need a little few extra bucks to make things even out. So we're going to create another fund that we can tap into when things get tight. So we can get a few extra bucks to even things out. It's the same, essentially, it's going to function the same way. And it seems silly to do it both.
I mean, I think that's a, I think that's a valid question. Now, one thing I will say, full disclosure, I've read a lot of legislative language this week. I haven't read that bill particularly. So it may be that the constitutional amendment simply directs 5% of the proceeds from gross production taxes into the rainy day fund and doesn't create a separate account. But my understanding is from what, you know, the bill summaries and, you know, news and other things I've been reading obsessively, obsessively at all hours of the day and night, is that it does create a separate fund. But that's something that we will check on and I'll get back to you next week to verify, does that create a separate fund? Or does it just mandate that 5% of the proceeds, proceeds from gross production go into the rainy day fund that already exists?
I don't know. I think it's, I'm pretty sure it's a separate fund. It just seems silly that that's the way it is.
Yeah, yeah.
Anyway.
All right. So moving on.
A quick thing to caveat is that, yeah, a lot has happened, but kind of like nothing really happened. A bunch of bills have passed out of committee, but that doesn't mean that they are law yet. And so basically, when you and I were kind of prepping for this, we joke that if bills didn't pass committee, if, if bills are dead, then they're essentially dead for this session. But if bills are still quote alive, that doesn't necessarily mean that they will pass in the end.
Zombie bills.
Some, well, there's always zombie bills that can come back from the dead. That sounds ridiculous, but it's true.
So one thing to hit on too, we've said several times how busy this week was. And you know, you just mentioned all these things coming out of committee. So why, why was this week so busy? And why was there so much committee work done? There's really two reasons. So the first and most pressing reason is that today, actually, March 1st was the deadline for bills in regular session. The regular legislative session for the, what are we in 56th legislature?
Yep.
To be passed out of committee, that deadline was today. So in order for a bill that like a house member wanted to have heard, if that member wants their bill to become law, today was the deadline for it to be passed by the committee to which it was assigned in the chamber of origin.
Right.
So which for house members would be the House and Senate for the Senate.
Right. Yeah. So House bills had to pass house committees, Senate bills had to pass Senate committees.
Right. And if that doesn't happen by today, then they're done. But even if they, even if that does happen by today, they may still be done.
Right. Because sometimes bills pass out of committee, but just because the makeup of that particular committee and everyone kind of knows that like, this doesn't have a shot in hell of passing the floor.
Right. And then there are other bills that pass only under certain conditions. So one thing that you may have seen and that we'll talk about today is a bill that passed, but the title was stricken. So lawmakers can go and they can, through a kind of a quasi amendment process, they can say, we want to do what's called strike the title from this bill.
Strike it.
And what that means is that the bill can pass, but out of committee. However, before the bill can be passed by the House and the Senate and signed into law, the title has to be put back.
And usually it's because they're going to do some kind of amendments between now and when it's heard again.
Right. So striking the title in committee is a way for lawmakers to say, okay, I'm going to, I'm going to go with you. I'm going to pass this bill out of committee. But we're going to pull the title and that's like a safeguard to kind of help ensure that there's one more hoop that the bill has to go through before it can be passed and cited to law.
I'm curious, how many times a bill that has had its title stricken, didn't go any further? Like, because it, most of them, the ones that I have noticed, title gets stricken, they make some amendments, it comes back on the floor and they say, okay, we're putting the title back on and they just keep rolling with it. And so I don't know that it's, it's kind of like, well, we'll pass it with these amendments that I'm yet to make, basically. So.
Right. Well, so we're going to kind of keep going and we're, this week, because so much has happened, we're going to try and kind of focus on certain policy areas. Education, you know, healthcare, budget, these sorts of things. To help kind of organize this discussion a little bit, both so we can keep our heads straight. And you can keep your straight listening. And so first up this week was education, really legislatively. A lot did not happen in education this week, but there's been a lot of talk about education. As we mentioned earlier, teachers are threatening to strike. There's been a lot of buzz about that. Andy, thoughts on they should, they shouldn't, would it be effective, would it not?
Oh, I don't know. So interestingly enough, the teachers in the entire state of West Virginia were striking, struck, stroke, nope, not that one. Striked, struck. Anyway, teachers in West Virginia were on strike yesterday. So every school in the whole state was shut down because of that. And was it yesterday or the day before? Anyway, that resulted in a, they, they were 5% increase, which is not that much money, really. And so, I mean, for teachers in Oklahoma, it's, it would be about $8,000, which is a pretty good chunk of change. So I mean, I think that's basically what they're fighting for. Our teachers would love to have that. I know today there was a school up by Tulsa that some teachers and students walked out and we're kind of picketing across from the school. I saw a tweet from former Oklahoma City Schools Public Superintendent Aurora Laura that was kind of saying, like encouraging folks to, she was saying, hey, I'll help you make lunches so that students don't go without lunch. But like really let's kind of gear up for this. I won't be surprised if they do. I don't know if it'll make a big difference. It, I would hope so. But again, in the past three years, the teachers have had very large rallies, like more than 10,000 people at the Capitol and they've not had a raise. And so I don't, at this point, man, I don't know what it would take to really make a difference.
No, I agree. Now, I will say the last time that there was a teacher strike in Oklahoma was 1990 and had a big effect. There was a big, they got a, they, there was a big tax increase. They got a substantial raise. And the response to that was the passage of state question 640 in 1992, which is the reason that we're in the kind of contingent. I want to be clear, I'm not blaming the teachers. I'm just saying it has happened before. But sometimes when, you know, when any kind of organized group, you know, labor group takes steps like these, there can be repercussions that are maybe hard to foresee.
Well, and again, so in 1990, the Democrats had a super majority, basically reverse of the way it is now. And teachers had a big strike. The Democrats passed House Bill 1019, which set up the 1019 fund, which is a, like apportions a certain amount of money straight to education. And it was, that fund was set up on the back of a big tax increase.
Yeah.
Income tax increase, I think. And people were angry about that. And so the next year, there was a budget initiative to make it more difficult to raise taxes, which was known as state question 640. And here we are again, 28 years later. Facing the, the solution to the problem has now become the problem again.
Yeah.
It's all, everything, history just repeats itself.
Right. I admit to that. Um, one proposal that has been floated this week is a way to potentially fund a teacher pay raise is to get funds from the trust that is administered by the commissioners of the land office. Now, we could have, we could literally have an entire episode or a series of episodes on what the CLO is, what they do and how they do it. We're not going to do that, at least not today. Suffice it to say that Oklahoma, the state of Oklahoma owns a number or kind of holds in permanent trust a number of federal lands and they own the mineral rights to these lands. And they lease these lands out for the drilling of oil and natural gas. When companies find oil and natural gas, they pull it out of the ground. When that happens, they pay royalties to the state of Oklahoma. The royalties that are paid on those mineral rights are directed into a trust. The interest every year from that trust is, is not diverted, is distributed to the public school system and the Oklahoma State Regents for Higher Education. It is every few years, there is talk of, hey, why don't we go to the CLO and take some of that money and use it to fund things like teacher pay raises and these sorts of things. I think there are people that would argue, one, that's a bad idea from a policy standpoint. But whether it's a good or a bad idea from a policy standpoint, it's unconstitutional. So the constitution of the state of Oklahoma sets up the CLO and directs where and how the money from the CLO can be spent. The reason that the state of Oklahoma does that is because. The reason that the state of Oklahoma does that is because it's a requirement of the Enabling Act of nineteen oh six. The Enabling Act of nineteen oh six is the law that allowed Oklahoma to become a state. So if the Oklahoma legislature, in their infinite wisdom, was to try and write a law that changes how the CLO money is distributed and otherwise used. And the Oklahoma Supreme Court found it constitutional, which I don't think they would. What could potentially happen is that the federal government could step in and say, actually, you're violating the terms of the Enabling Act by misusing the proceeds from these federal lands that you hold in trust. So we're taking them back.
Whoops.
Like they can do that. Like the feds could come in and say, all this land that we allow you guys to hold entrusted administer and earn money off of. Um, yeah, because you violated the terms that we set up when you become state, we're taking those back now. Um, thank you. And so then not only does that new source of money dry up, but the old source of money would be gone as well. And then the feds could come in and claw back um, in the expenditures that they deemed were inappropriate. So all that to say, um, as much as it sounds like fun, and I think it's representative Gan, Gon Gan from Inola.
Yeah.
That is, uh, that is proposing this. Um, I don't think that there's traction for this to go anywhere.
No, I don't think it'd go anywhere either. And once again, if we, why do we already propose laws that we know are going to be unconstitutional? I know in some other states, maybe Maine, they have like a staff of legislative experts constitutional law attorneys who review all laws that are proposed to make sure that they're not going to violate state law before they ever go to a vote. So it's like, you know what? No, this violates, you know, clause W of section seven. And so we just skip it, um, which saves a lot of time, I would think.
I would say we should do that, but we don't have any money to pay them.
Right. And also it would become some kind of partisan bickering divide on who gets to select those people. All right.
So education, I think that's kind of where we ended up. Did you have anything else for?
No, sure don't.
Delightful.
Along. Um, so next let's do healthcare with the good Dr. Scott Melson. Um, so, uh, three quick things and we'll kind of try to run through all this stuff. I know this can get laborious. Um, so the first one, hot button issue, medical marijuana, senate bill eleven twenty, this is by Senator Yin. Um, that, and this is in a response to the proposal, uh, the state question that's coming out there about passage of medical marijuana, we'll vote on it this summer. Um, senate bill eleven twenty. It's too bad it's not senate bill four twenty.
I know, right?
Man, that would have been funny. Anyway, um, it basically, um, defines who can prescribe medical marijuana and what it needs, can be prescribed for. Um, it, it scales back the way that the state question is written. As we've discussed before on this podcast, the, the state question is really broad and it's amazing that the ballot title has been allowed to be so broad. It basically says, anybody for any medical condition is at the discretion of the individual medical provider. They get to decide if it's relevant or not. And there's certainly some freedom in that. Um, and some people love freedoms, some people are anxious about the amount of freedom this may allow for doctors with dubious intent. Or patients or whatever. It's about if people think medical marijuana, they, if they think the law is about medical marijuana, or as Senator Yin has said, he feels that this law makes it about recreational marijuana, really.
Right. I mean, I think you hit the nail on the head. This is basically Senator Yan, who, and Senator, Senator Yan is a physician and this is Senator Yan trying to, I think, create some, some rules of the road for if Oklahoma is going to have medical marijuana, that it's, that it's not kind of a, a wild west, you know, free for all, that there are, you know, certain conditions for which, because it's true. I mean, I think there's a, there's, you know, there, and I'm gonna, full disclaimer here, medical marijuana is not something that, that I have, you know, any more or less expertise on than any other physician. Um, it's not something that's really pertinent to my area of practice. So I'm not gonna sit here and try and tell you what, you know, summarize all the research for and against medical marijuana. Suffice it to say that there are, there are conditions for which it seems to be helpful and indicated. But I think that those can be exaggerated. I think, you know, there is a voice in the medical marijuana movement that says it can be used to treat anything and everything. And that's not really the case. And this is Senator Yin, for better or for worse, trying to say the, that to limit, to limit doctors, nurse practitioners, you know, PAs, whoever, limit them to prescribing it for conditions for which there is, you know, a, a decent volume of research saying that it's safe and effective.
Right. I mean, it's, uh, basically the state trying to like hold the reins a little bit before this passes, should it pass, um, in case it passes, so that it's not a wild.
Reefer madness.
Right, right. Anyway.
One thing I thought was interesting in debate over this in committee and, and debating Q and A, Senator Yin wants to run the bill, whether seven eighty eight passes or not. So seven eighty eight is, is the question that would legalize medical marijuana. Um, Senator Yin says, even if seven eighty eight fails, he wants to run this bill and use it to essentially create medical marijuana in Oklahoma, just under a much more narrow set of conditions.
That's interesting. Yeah. Well, because either way, I mean, we have this, the legislature has to hear this bill by the end of May.
Right.
Um, and so it would have to pass before we get to vote on it in June anyway.
So he wants to, he wants to potentially use this, at least according to the dialogue in committee. He, Senator Yan wants to use this bill as a vehicle to create medical marijuana, should the state question fail.
Right. I think he, well, I don't really know if he sees a actual medical use for it or not.
And this is also just as a kind of point of, you know, uh, policy or wonkness or whatever you wanna call it. This is one of the bills that had the title stricken. So it passed committee six to five. Um, from what I hear, it is pretty questionable whether it would have passed committee had they not stricken the title.
Right. Probably got that extra vote on there.
Yeah.
All right. Well, speaking of Senator Yan, uh, there was another bill that I think garnered some attention, Senate Bill eleven twenty three. Also authored by Senator Yan, that removes the provision that allows parents, I guess this is in a, in place now. Parents can submit a letter of objection, so they, basically so their kids don't have to get vaccinations. Um, so it would, it would, um, force parents to vaccinate their children is basically what his law would do.
Yeah. So, so right now, if you, the way that state law works in Oklahoma, if your kids go to public school and they want to be exempt from certain vaccines, it requires either a letter from their physician saying that they are medically exempt. Or the parents can write a letter and submit it to the health, to the health department, I think.
Yeah.
Uh, the parents can write a letter stating their objection to vaccines. And the basically submission of that letter is sufficient to allow the child not to get their vaccines and attend public school. Um, Senator Yan's bill would remove that provision. And so the only way that kids could attend public school without routine vaccines would be uh, a letter from their physician stating that they're medically exempt.
Actually medically exempt. Anyway, that bill failed.
Yeah, three to five, three to eight.
So parents, you can continue to not vaccinate your children.
But please vaccinate them, please, please, please.
Pediatrician implores you, please vaccinate.
Yeah, feel free to reach out on Facebook or Twitter if you would like to discuss this.
There you go. Staying in the medical vein, there's a couple of bills about Medicaid, House Bill thirty five fifty six. Um, which would be the Medicaid, Medicaid work requirement. This has been discussed at the federal level recently. This is at the state level now. It did, um, pass out of committee, um, on a vote of six to three. I think it was a party line vote. The bill is literally called Poor Person's Act of twenty eighteen. Is, Scott, I'm looking at your notes. That's, I haven't looked at, that's for real?
Yeah.
Come on, guys, like.
It's in the text.
Just, just make us think that it's not about that.
Right?
Like.
It's in the text.
Uh, I mean, our, kudos that you're just calling it what it is. That's obscene.
So, but you know, the, the.
Person's act.
Yeah. So the thought of this, the, the, from the reps that are sponsoring this, my understanding in a way is that, so what this is gonna do is it's gonna change Medicaid eligibility to be the same as for SNAP, which is food stamps, right? The supplemental nutrition assist, supplemental nutrition assistance program and TANF. Now, um, I am not an expert on federal aid programs, but I can tell you that at least when it comes to TANF, which is the temporary assistance for needy families, that is hard to get, right?
Medicaid is such a pain in the ass to get, like.
Right.
The, the, yes, there are always people who have it that you and I might think they don't, they shouldn't have it, right? There's always folks on disability, you don't think, not that many. They're, they still had to jump through all the same hoops and I, I have helped countless people apply for Medicaid and disability. And I tell you, it is a pain in the ass. I could not do it myself. Um, it takes a team of people in almost every case and a lawyer and a judge. It's, you can't just go out and apply for it and get it. It's a lot of work. And so establishing a work requirement just makes it harder for people to get it. And that means harder for those that shouldn't get it perhaps, but also harder for those that should. And that is really disappointing.
Right. And the, the other thing here that this completely ignores is that, is that people that are healthy can work more, right? So if someone is sick and you take away their ability to get healthcare, they probably can't get a job. But if someone is sick and they have insurance and they can be seen by a doctor and they can, um, they can have their, their, whatever the health issue is, they can have it addressed, they can probably work more.
Right. Like they could get better and work, although there are some, it's really, we really kind of pin people in if they're on uh, government assistance, right? So like Medicaid, people, I know lots of folks would love to get off Medicaid. They'd love to get off SNAP. They'd love to get off of TANF. Um, but the, the difficulty is that we make it so hard that there's not like an even transition period, right? Like, so for, for, um, if you're on disability and you have Medicaid, um, you cannot have more than two thousand dollars in assets. Uh, you can have one vehicle and the place you live, if by some chance you happen to like have been gifted a home or inherited a home, which almost never happens. And other than that, you have to, you can only have two thousand dollars in assets. And for every dollar over that, you start losing assistance, but it's not an equitable rate. It's not like a one for one thing. And also there's, it's, the whole system is really upside down. So that's a whole other issue. I get that that becomes a partisan issue. I just care about poor people, okay? Like, and I want them to have, to be able to not be homeless and to have enough food to eat and to be able to go to the doctor when they need to. And I've done this for like fifteen years and it wears me out.
Right. No, it's, I mean, I think there's a narrative that, there's a narrative out there that people who are poor are poor because they're choosing to be. And if they simply made better choices, they wouldn't be poor. I'm not here to say that people that are living in poverty always make great choices. They don't. But the reasons that they don't are incredibly complicated and oftentimes are not the root cause for why they're in poverty to begin with.
Right.
There's actually really good evidence out there that shows that people who live in poverty for no fault of their own. Um, kind of struggle with decision making, um, in a way that people who were born into more affluent lifestyles don't necessarily. I mean, would you agree with that, that that's?
Yeah, yeah.
Anyway, all right, that's the first Medicaid bill. There's also Senate Bill ten thirty. Senate Bill ten thirty, uh, lowers the threshold at which people qualify for Sooner Care. So this doesn't just, this doesn't add a work requirement. It just takes the amount of money that you can make per year and get sooner care and drop it pretty dramatically, um, by, uh, for, for point of reference, a single mother who has two children and makes three hundred and forty six dollars a month, uh, would not qualify. So.
Hmm.
That's not a lot of money.
That's, that's pocket change.
This would, uh, this would save the state of Oklahoma, apparently about eighty four million dollars a year. It would also deny Sooner Care benefits to forty three thousand people, mostly children who currently have them.
And again, Sooner Care is Oklahoma's Medicaid program.
Yeah.
So, uh, those are interchangeable.
At the time that we're recording, Senate Bill ten thirty had not yet been heard by, uh, committee, I don't believe.
Okay, so maybe it's afternoon.
We'll have to get an update for you on whether or not that's gonna pass or not. Um, anything else, Andrew?
No, I mean, as, um, someone who, my sister has been on Sooner Care and I have lots of friends that have had to be on Sooner Care at one time or another, because their employer didn't offer insurance and they've got little kids and.
Good friend of mine, four, good friend, family of four, mom, dad, two kids, both college educated. Mom has a graduate degree, both have been working, dad got laid off this week.
Yeah.
Through no fault of his own. And they're on Sooner Care now. This is a family who has literally done everything that we've asked them to. Oh, and by the way, this is not a family that grew up destitute. Okay. This is a family like they come from, both come from, you know, solid middle class to upper middle class backgrounds. Both of them have been to college. Like I said, the, the mom has a graduate degree. Um, both have been working full time. Two weeks ago, dad got laid off. Um, is actively looking for work, but until he can find a job, they're on Sooner Care. And this is a bill that would take that away from them.
That's unconscionable. I'm sure there's a provision for that. I want to hope. Anyway, so the next section is on guns. Scott, you're squeezing your head.
Yeah.
So we're gonna, we're gonna step our toes into this. Um, and we recognize this is a hot button issue in America and certainly here in Oklahoma. Scott, you mentioned earlier that Oklahoma Watch.
Yes.
Has the, the explainer on gun rights and all that. So that's a good place to start. Three bills, all from Representative Cootie this week. They all three passed the House Public Safety Committee. Twenty nine eighteen, twenty nine fifty one and thirty one ninety two. You probably don't care about the numbers, so we'll tell you what they are. Uh, the first one allows people to carry concealed or unconcealed on personal property where they have permission. So that's, um, you can be in your home and your friend's home, as long as they're okay with it. Um, does this include businesses or no?
I believe so. I think it's any private property.
Okay, so any personal property. Um, that passed overwhelmingly twelve to thirteen, twelve to three. Um, the next one, twenty nine fifty one is the quote constitutional carry. It allows carrying of handgun without a license or without training. Um, basically anybody can carry a gun, no big deal.
Yeah. So constitutional carry typically applies only to handguns, doesn't apply to long guns. So long guns, meaning rifles, shotguns. Um, so it's.
Bazookas.
Only handgun, only handguns. What was interesting to me about twenty nine fifty one is that during debate, um, there were some questions about why would you allow someone to, to, to carry handgun without a license or training? And Representative Cootie's response was that it's not that I don't think training is necessary. He's like, I just think that the amount of training the government requires is not enough. I'm not gonna rely on a government mandate to determine whether someone is safely carrying a handgun or not. So.
It's not enough, so we should do away with it?
Yeah, apparently Representative Cootie's argument is because the government in his mind does not require sufficient training for someone to carry a handgun, we shouldn't require training at all. And people should be expected to police themselves and make the judgment for their, make, make their own judgment about whether or not the level of, um, training and practice they have is sufficient to safely carry a weapon in public.
Hmm, alright.
Which I, I just find odd, but that's his argument. Passed committee ten to six. Um, party lines with one exception, uh, Representative Onby, who is a Republican, voted against the bill, but otherwise it was a party line vote.
And the third bill, possibly, this is hard to imagine, but perhaps the most contentious of these three, um, especially this week. Uh, House Bill thirty one ninety two allows school boards to designate personnel who can carry on campus. Basically allowing teachers to carry guns on campus, right?
And this was.
Not, not just teachers, teachers, janitors, uh, service personnel, administrators, school boards can, can and will decide who the school board is ultimately the authority, not the state or local government. The school board is ultimately the authority about who can carry on campus or not.
So I just want to say, did this pass the House Committee?
It did.
Okay.
Party line vote again.
Um, so yet again, maybe a reminder that should this pass both chambers and get signed by some chance, that would give this authority to the school boards. This is why school board elections matter, because you didn't think about it at the time. You thought they're just voting on like school bonds and like build a new gym. But it turns out they might be the ones deciding who gets to carry guns into the schools. So.
Yeah. And again, we're not here to kind of comment whether this is good policy or bad policy. Like I have my own personal thoughts about this. I'm sure that Andy does too. We're just trying to let you know what, what's happening in the legislature this week. And, you know, let you know, like, is this something that you have a strong opinion on one way or the other? Um, and if it is, you know, contact your state representative or your state senator and let him know your thoughts.
Then our last bill in this section, Scott, you have this under a heading called dumbass stuff. I really. I have a feeling you want to talk about taking his glasses off. He's rubbing his eyes. He's ready to go. Do you want me to set it up here? It's House Bill twenty seven twenty five banning coeds, which, okay, first of all, coeds is such a funny term to me.
Right. I mean, it just.
Bans coed housing in universities. Um, so I assume this applies to state universities.
Yes.
Because many private universities already banned this alma mater. We had separate dormitories across campus. There was no co-mingling.
Which is funny, because at my private university, it was encouraged.
Really?
We had open.
My wife, my wife and I met because we lived not across the hall from each other, but close.
Well, I mean, people still met at my alma mater as well, but we had open dorm. Maybe once a semester where you could go over for three hours and go into the girls dorm or they could come into the guys dorm.
I say it was encouraged. I say it was encouraged. We, uh.
You had to hear doors open though.
We, well, there was none of that.
Stay vertical.
I think that our rule, I think our rule was that people of the opposite sex had to be out of your room by two AM.
What?
Yeah, I just felt like this was, you know, so the bill, the bill bans coed housing. It defines coed housing as men and women sharing the same dorm, men and women living on the same hall. Um, it says that men and women can live in the same hall, provided it's on separate wings and provided that there is controlled access between the two. And I'm just, you know, can't we let adults be adults like?
Well, can't we let universities police their own?
I mean.
Why do we need a law about this?
I just, I just, and the thing that really got me about twenty seven twenty five is that it has an emergency clause. Like it has an emergency clause.
Which would make it take effect this semester.
Yeah. Now, let, let it be known, the bill got laid over in committee. If it's going to pass, it's going to happen today. Last I checked, nothing has happened.
I'm sure it won't.
Think it's ridiculous that this is even a thing we're talking about.
But this is a funny deal. So if they, let's say, for the sake of argument, it did pass both houses and the governor was going to sign it like right away and the emergency clause passed. If they did all of that in the next two weeks by some magic, it could go into effect before the school year is out. And what happens?
Right before finals. And what happens to the people that are already living?
Have to move the week before finals?
Right. I just.
All right. Well, anyway.
So that is, that is our, that is our recap of kind of what happened in the legislature this week. You know, normally we try to dig into the weeds a little bit more and talk about, you know, was there any really notable debate on the floor? Um, yeah, really this week, there was, there was not a lot of floor action this week. It was really all committee. Um, you know, we, Andy and I, I think, follow kind of the social media accounts of a lot of the legislators, legislators pretty closely. Um, to see if, you know, anything interesting is happening there. Um, this week, not a lot of tweeting from legislators because they're all in committee meetings all the time. I think Senate Appropriation Budget Committee yesterday had sixty nine bills, which is, which is a lot. Um, so Andy, any kind of thoughts? What is all, kind of what does all this mean? What are, what are your, where, how do you feel after where we're ending the legislative week?
I think everyone's ready for spring break.
Um, amen to that.
And they, it's been just a busy time with both sessions. And so I'm, I think everyone is relieved that the special session is coming to an end finally. We can finally put an end to the twenty seventeen session and fully focus on this year. Uh, so we'll, I can just keep plugging ahead. Um, and I think now this allows everyone to go home for the weekend and sleep and then get ready for next week to come back to work and really have their entire brain focused on the, the twenty nineteen budget and what needs to happen during this regular session.
And start hearing all the bills that passed in the opposite chamber that they haven't had time to pay attention to yet.
That's exactly right. Exactly right. All right. So let's, uh, take a quick break. And when we come back, we are going to discuss.
Partisanship.
Oh, right. A few things, a few thoughts on partisanship. Indeed, we'll be right back. All right. Hey, we're back. Scott and I were talking about this, uh, over text this week and we wanted to say a few words about, I guess about partisanship and maybe the, the better term is post-partisanship. And I, this is really more of an editorial bit, not that any of our podcasts is not editorial, but, um, we at Let's Fix This really, since the beginning, have striven, strove, made every effort.
We strive.
We strive to present both sides. And maybe here's the better thought is that we, we're not trying to present any particular side, just all sides. And to talk about it in a, talk about issues in a pretty open way. I know some things, I'll be honest, like I get on a, I get on the soapbox about Medicaid and things that affect, you know, widows and orphans and the poor and mental illness, because that's the, my background. I'm a licensed professional counselor. I have worked day in and day out with folks that are struggling in one form or another for the last like fifteen years. And it's near and dear to my heart. And, and I don't think that, I don't think that issues about like teacher pay, about children's safety, about mental health and substance abuse and people accessing healthcare, I don't think those should be partisan issues. I feel like that's, those are human issues. Like these are things that matter to people. These are things that matter to Oklahomans, to a striking percentage of Oklahomans. And those issues cross all party lines, all political leanings. And that, I think when you ask people one on one, as we do all the time, um, legislators and just, you know, regular everyday voters alike, everyone kind of wants the same thing. And, and so I guess I, I'm maybe as, as the executive director of our organization, to whatever extent it's applicable, if, if there have been things that come across as being partisan one way or the other, um, please know that's truly not intentional. We're not trying to push any policy. And in fact, we as a, myself and then the board, um, who kind of steers this ship has been, had numerous conversations at like every meeting about how we can try to not, we can talk about issues without getting involved in those issues. And that's tough sometimes.
Yeah, no, I, I a hundred, I, I agree a hundred percent. I mean, it really does. You know, I, I, um, you know, certainly we're not, we're not journalists where, you know, I'm a pediatrician and Andy's an LPC and we try to host a podcast in our spare time. So we certainly had a, you know, don't think of ourselves as, you know, uh, people that are doing kind of, you know, reporting or pundits or anything else. But I do really appreciate, um, as we've been doing this the last six months, how hard it can be to, um, try and keep your own, you know, perspectives and, and biases out of discussion. So, you know, I hope as people listen to us, I hope that they really feel, even when, you know, even when maybe our personal perspectives peek through, which they certainly do from time to time, um, referenced the discussion on the banning of coed residency in universities earlier. Even when that does peek through, I hope people listen to us and they feel like that they're getting a good, a good sense of like what, what the issue is and what the pros and cons are. And kind of starting to make up their own mind about where they land. Because that's really what this is all about, right?
Right.
It's not, like, this is not about, this is not about pushing a liberal agenda or a conservative agenda. It's not about advocating to, you know, this policy or that policy. I mean, I think that there are, I think there are issues where maybe we tend to take a little bit of a stand. But I think that those are issues that, like you said, tend to cross party lines, right?
And those are certainly our personal opinions.
Absolutely.
And I mean, there are things that you and I disagree about where I'm like, easy there, buddy. And, you know, for, um, as a, as a very recent kind of glaring example is the, the big push for the step up plan. You know, that has been the last couple of months. Um, we, I got a lot of flack from, uh, people um, that sent me emails and direct messages, which I always appreciate and I try to respond to all of them. Uh, but there are a lot of folks that were really upset that we as an organization didn't take a stance on the step up plan. We didn't, and they were specifically saying they were mad that we didn't endorse it, disappointed we didn't endorse it. And I tried to explain like, I, that I, we, I'll say, it used to be me, but now it's really the board, um, that.
You work for me, buddy. Don't forget it.
That, that Let's Fix This's stance on this stuff is, is irrelevant. There are plenty of groups and people telling you if you should or shouldn't support it. What we want to do is give you more information and help you think about all sides of an issue so that you as a voter can decide. And if, and if you end up on a different side, then that's okay. Like that's what democracy is all about, right?
Right. Absolutely. I mean, like our, our goal here is for you to be engaged with government in a way that maybe you haven't been before. If you're somebody who never votes, then our vote is for you, our goal is for you to maybe vote in some elections. If you vote every time, then maybe our goal is for you to maybe start coming to the Capitol, talking to your legislatures.
Right.
If you come to the Capitol and have lunch with your legislator every week, then.
That's awesome.
Maybe our goal is that you.
Invite us to come with you.
You know, our, our goal is for wherever, wherever you are in kind of your journey of civic engagement. Um, yeah, you like that. Um, our goal is for you to take the next step and for us to be there to help you.
Yeah. And, and also coming back to the topic of partisanship or, or I've read a few articles about post-partisanship and we'll, we'll probably have a blog coming out about this in the next week or two. That in Oklahoma, to some degree in America, I think there are people that are very frustrated with the way things are going. So in, in Oklahoma's history, a brief history is that Democrats were basically in charge for ninety years.
Yeah.
And then the Republicans have been in charge for the past twenty years. And here we are, like both sides.
Nobody does a great job.
Right. I mean, there's failure on both sides, right? And in fact, the, uh, as far as voter registration goes, there are more independents that, that, more people are registering as independent month after month than either party. Um, and, and I'm, I know a lot of people, um, from both parties that have switched. Uh, I myself, I was a Republican for the first, uh, ten years of my life. And then I changed my registration somewhere in two thousand eight or two thousand nine, maybe, um, to Democrat. And I am going to change it to independent here in about two weeks when I move, um, to be totally transparent. Because it's, I'm just frustrated, I think, and not disenfranchised, but, um, certainly disappointed, I think. And, and that's my choice. I don't know that I'll ever, that I'll stay as independent, but that's, I feel like that is the, if I've got to sign a label, that's the one that feels most representative of how I feel and how I vote. Um, that is not tied to one side or the other.
Yeah, no, I think that's really, I think that's really good. So, I mean, I, I just, you know, I hope that no one, you know, I hope no one listens to us and, uh, I hope no one listens to us and, and thinks that we're trying to promote a particular agenda. I hope that no one, I hope that no one wants to come to one of our Capitol days or our Capitol crawls or one of our trainings or forums and, and feels like they can't because their perspective wouldn't be welcome.
Right.
We love, we love, you know, we, we love to talk, we love to talk to anyone and everyone. I'll tell, I'll tell you right now, if you love to, I don't, I don't care if you're Republican, Democrat, liberal, conservative, progressive, independent, libertarian. If you like whiskey and talking politics, um, I will meet you anytime, anywhere. And, and we can sit and talk as long as you want, because I, I love talking about this stuff. This is my, you know, I love my job, but this is what I love to do when I'm not at my job. You know what I mean? And I love talking with people who agree with me, but I love talking with people who disagree with me even more.
That's exactly right. All right. On that note, uh, I think we're going to wrap it up for today. I do want to say that OK Ledge needs to step it up because the Utah House of Representatives have put out.
Did they just call us out?
No, they put out a rap video.
Oh, they did.
About how a bill becomes a law and it's set to the tune of The Fresh Prince of Bel Air, which is certainly a throwback to my childhood.
I'll have to watch that. Also, can I put in a quick, uh, post, postscript?
Yes.
Just an update that I'm sure all of our listeners are dying for.
Yes.
Uh, folks may remember that, uh, two weeks ago, three weeks ago, two weeks ago, on Valentine's Day, our Valentine's Day episode.
Oh, yes.
I referenced my father and that he does not listen to the podcast, because I wasn't sure he understands what a podcast is. Uh, not forty eight hours later, we were on a, a long car trip together and I said, we're going to listen to the pod. And he said, what is that again? And I, uh, I played it for him. He, the old man really got a kick out of it, really enjoyed it. And, uh, I showed him how to subscribe. Now he's a subscriber and says he's going to be a, a weekly listener.
Nice.
Now, he's also my father, so take that for what it's worth. But, uh, we've got at least one new subscriber in the last, in the last fourteen days. And if you have any friends that you think would be interested in this kind of discussion, please, uh, share it. Let them know what we do. Let them know what we're about. Let them know where they can find it. Please subscribe and, uh, rate us on iTunes.